For coming and listening to the community show up to be plugged in and be informed. This is one way that you can stay informed is participating in these types of activities. So before we begin tonight, I would like everyone to take a stand and let Silver fly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, tonight, I have two volunteers joining me with this. I'm with the Chamber if you guys don't know who I am. Lisa Farhorsen, the CEO for the Dalles Area Chamber, otherwise known as the Bossy Loudmouth, but I was meant for my job. So, I'm, yeah, husband says I was well-suited. And for anyway, but I want to thank first off the candidates. It's always a little unnerving to get up in front of people, but I want to express in front of everybody my appreciation because you guys are volunteering to serve our community. And that means a lot to me. I am a community-oriented organization who really appreciates people who step up and are willing to serve. So first off, thank you all for being willing to do that. And I want to thank the community for being here also. So, and then my two favorite volunteers for this evening are sitting right over here. Yeah, don't look. So Roger Nichols, as some of you may recognize his voice coming from the radio station and other things, historian and many other positions that he holds in Volunteers' Floor. He's one of our moderators. And then Dan Spatz, who is at the college project team, but he's not his speakers in all different things that will help our community for the good. So I appreciate you two gentlemen taking over for me for the rest of the evening. So I will quit talking and yapping and you guys can go forward.
Okay, party's over now. We're gonna hit the top line yet. Here we go. Thanks. Here's what we have in mind tonight. We have the dozen candidates who are here. We're gonna give each of you five minutes and we want to ask a very simple bunch of questions for you. We're not gonna take questions from the audience tonight. We just wanna get through this because then have an opportunity to get in personal, you know, anything like that. So the questions we have are... Keep this very simple. Questions we have. Tell us about yourself. Who are you? Why do you want to serve? And what are your plans to work in the future? My idea is to give you enough individuality and convince us how cool you are and how smart you are and how suited for the job you are. So no pressure whatsoever. Again, I'll apologize if I play the remains when I go up. So what we're gonna do is we're going to start with Florida County Parks Recreation and who's your...
With Mark.
All right. So, and by the way, yeah, here's our stopwatch indicator and I think that when you get admitted to go, you can move aside and then you ramp it up. Okay? The mic's up there and congratulations.
Hey, yeah. I'm Bruce Woodmire. I'm 29 years old, born and raised in Dallas for the most part. Been an active individual, whether it be sports as a kid, growing up, I've got more into different types of recreation, mountain biking, water sports, hiking, all sorts of outdoor activities, and then progressing into having two children. And now I'm trying to incorporate then the activity of my idea of that. Team sports, playing cards, and all sorts of recreation that's great, but the board has forums. So, doing that, I feel like I need to do a little more for my kids, do a little more for my community, and that's why I'm running for Parks and Recreation District Position Group. My plans and collective are to help the Parks and Recreation District implement a new master plan, which looks great, all the different ideas and opportunities we have there to grow community and grow the ability for everybody to become active and engaged in the Parks and Recreation. I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the fire fire rescue position number one, out of eight ways.
Good evening. Roger announced my name is Diana Bailey and I'm running for the board position number one for the Fire District here. About me personally, I have been early born and raised in the Dallas and quite active in our community. I have in the past worked on several boards. I have been on the class board and that was one of my most challenging but the most rewarding boards of service. I work with Tapata for Humanity and also American Red Cross over my marriage. I am a nurse. I have played many roles as a nurse, I've been a community nurse, I've been a hospital nurse. I am currently serving or mentally ill locally at Menpluma's Central Living, working on a grant to help mental illness physical health treatments to follow at their location. We're here to serve them in the place they're in. So personally, I have been quite active in our community and I enjoy this town. I have chosen to live here, don't plan on moving away. The Fire District has been a true central joy for me. I began my career as a volunteer fireman in EMT in 1992. And I've been active in the fire department ever since. I have been a volunteer, EMT firefighter, budget committee, officer position. I served as your Board of Director in different years, 1998 to 2011. I had to resign for a little bit of time to take a personal time to get my master's degree in nursing before I could return to teach at the local college. I have seen our fire district merge from two to one. We have grown from building a community, central location. We have remodeled Station Two. We have a training tower available for our staff for training. We have administered several grants for equipment and materials and also manpower. We still currently have safer grants, you probably heard about those in the paper, but it gives us more manpower to serve you and serve me for putting out fires and preventing loss of property or life. And so my goal is to continue this service for our fire district to make sure that we are safe, the ones that we care for, don't have loss of life or that we can minimize any impact. Our fire department is very strong in our mutual relationships with across the river, down through the river, Sherman County, South County. And it is my goal to continue those relationships. In our rural fire district, you rely very heavily on your communities and your support of each other. We have about 27 hired guys and you have a large structure fire that we have seen when they turn, from silo fires to Diamond Fruit Company in the river. You don't have enough manpower. So we got volunteers and we have community servers that come onboard. And as a board member, it's my goal to continue to find new and innovative ways that we can continue to serve and serve our community in a positive way. So that's who I am, why, and what I plan to do.
Thank you. Now we move to the school board. Everybody apparently in the room is ready for it. But we have, we have, not gonna start backwards, instead of starting with zone one. And we, what point in the middle, which one do you want to go first? You just gotta listen to who you want. Okay, with it. On permission, can I quote?
Of course.
All right. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys all for being here. I know that the amount of your need is, it's not special when you have folks at home and everything, so thank you for being here and it's an opportunity to kind of get to know you and us and why we're doing what we're doing. So, a little about me. I moved here in 2016. My family and I came from the Bay Area and we really found a great community here and it really led us to call this a home and really think about raising our son here. That's something that really has spoken to us and partly kind of motivation through money. My skill set and kind of my background is in the insurance industry, a professional insurance manager and currently managing the bond book over at Midbury County School District. And so through that, I've actually been a little jealous just to see what they've been able to achieve via their bond passing. And even just the programs, I've been very impressed with what leadership and community involvement really do to a community and provide for kids via programs, services, what have you. It's just very impressive and really kind of inspired me again to do that. I grew up in East Willa, Oregon, and I have kind of the same feel for that community, very supportive, they care about their kids. You know, I can still think back about getting in Battle of the Books in elementary, learning locks from my coaches playing sports, leadership skills in school clubs, and that type of stuff. I want to make sure that my son and the kids of our community have access to. I think it's really important. It's just to help me be successful in my current industry and just as an adult. I think it's my turn to really give back to the community what I was able to receive from life on campus. And in my kind of day to day, a lot of the things I deal with, budgeting, accounting, transcript recording, I've been able to do while at the same time kind of early in that respect and confidence in all my clients. And I think that's something that we here is really... And the other big thing we have is hiring a new superintendent. I've got a father-in-law who's retired superintendent, but working very closely with a reverse superintendent. I had a chance to really see, you know, what does a good superintendent look like? What qualities really makes a superintendent be successful? And I think that we look for hiring a new person for our district. And in that leadership role, I have a keen eye to what that should look like and what I've been able to see elsewhere. Lastly, I just want to say we have great candidates too. I don't want to discount that. I think that recent elections have certainly inspired a huge amount of people, which is amazing to see. I've had a lot of great people sit here in the front row and I think it's an exciting opportunity that we have in front of us to just really improve the experience our kids are gonna have in D21. So thank you and look forward to hearing from the other candidates myself.
Okay, three more. Cassie Ware.
Hi. My name is Cassie Ware. My parents moved here in, I think, '79, just after I left college and went to Dallas General Hospital. Let's tell them we're in Dallas. I've grown up here and then taught at a university, so I came back in this home and didn't want to be 72 miles away from anything. I think one of the things that I have enjoyed so much about growing up in Dallas is just the core teams we have, the things that so mean. I went to work for school with the captains, but half the other town, you know, we all experienced that in some extent. It's a fairly lessons in the rough upstairs in the real estate. It's a lessons in adolescent, that's what we're starting out town. This community that we're used to, I have had opportunities to give back through the veterans breakfasts that we do every year on the Florida State, Lester, I'm sorry, Bethany State. Lester unfortunately wasn't able to personally help for you, but we are planning on doing that again. I've had a lot of opportunities to give back and I'm personally pissed we'll do nothing again. One of the things that I've experienced growing up is that institutions, personalities, whatever it is, they do better when there's a theme, when there's a fusion. And one of the things I struggle with in the district is trying to, you know, learn about when we had the bond process and all of that, and all of that, or learn about returning to some sort of mental health support for our school, for our district. There's good pieces there. The pieces are there. It's hard to learn what they all are and it's hard to learn how they fit together. And so one of the things that I would like to do to bridge the borders, that quickness and that transparency, that community outreach from the schools to the community because we don't have that to the extent that I feel like our community needs it right now. It's hard to access the information and understand how it all works together. Some of that's because of the district is something that they do have a lot of great things going on, but I would like to see all of that sort of come together in a place where community can access and participate in that to a greater extent. Sorry, I'm a little... The other thing that I just really want to stress today is like, there's so many good people running. You can't pick the wrong person for this, right? For Zone Six, for any of the other zones. You can't pick the wrong person for the zone. So pay attention, go carefully, and thanks for being here.
Trudy, you gonna like Lepke's?
I'm in East End. My name is Trudy Lepke. I also was born here in the Dallas. My grandparents came here in 1940 and my grandmother and my dad still live in the area. My parents divorced and I, my mom moved away. My husband and I chose to make this city our home when he was after the position I grew up. So we've been here the last seven years and have made Dallas our community. I am really into volunteering. I was raised that way. My mom made sure that we did a lot of volunteering. I sat on the board of the grandparents organization at the high school and then helped create that proven orbit into friends of D21 music, which was interesting. I learned a lot about housing work. I was the secretary treasurer of that board. My career is in accounting, payroll, and resources. I have a very black and white view of things. I like organizations. I like things to be calm. I like to help be, I love being part of projects and watching projects more from disorganized to organized and growing with each project. The reason I chose to run for the school board is I got involved in another long-range planning that started in 2017 and it's that I am the owner meeting that designed a proposed new high school for Dallas. And from that, I was asked to join the Strong Community Schools Political Action Committee that's supporting the board. And the reason I felt that it was a good fit for me is I, my kids lived in Dallas High School. I was there for seven years, watching everything that happened in that building and it just is frustrating. It's, great things are happening there, there are great teachers, there are great activities, but that building is sad and the atmosphere in that building is sad and the students will tell you that it's hard sometimes for them to be there. So that's what drove me to be a part of that community. I really feel like the political action we had a great, Strong Community Schools, our community centers around their schools and they need to be strong for our students. And so from that community, I started attending school board meetings and following that process and for, I'll be honest with you, I'm a little cookie higher. I was like, why don't they ask the questions? Why, how does this process work? What are the rules around, you know, why can't the community talk? And so it's been a good learning experience for me to attend those meetings. And then for me, it was about making a difference, like all of the fellow people here. We're choosing to volunteer, we choose to live in this community, we want to make a difference and we want to set that example so that you, as our fellow community members, can support whatever. And I think that's truly what it's about. I don't have an agenda. I want to be a part of the team. I want to help the board be successful. The board has a lot to do in the next two years. They have to hire a new superintendent, they have to work with this assessment, that's the data called the Building Movement District. They have to decide if we're gonna build a bond and what that bond looks like. And in order to get those things done, they, this board needs to work as a community unit. And there may be six new bases on this board. Most of them have never been on a board of this high level before and so we have a huge learning curve ahead of us for those that are elected. So I too want to say thank you for coming and spending your night tonight and I hope that you will investigate the candidates and look for the one that best suits what you desire for this school board to look like going forward. And that's all.
Thank you. And we move to the candidates for Zone Six. We now move to Zone Five. And Bethany.
I'm in East End as well. Thanks for joining us. I appreciate all of you guys being here. I appreciate the admission from the Chamber. As it was already said, my name is Bethany Studebaker. I'm a candidate for the D21 School Board, Zone Five. I'm an instructor at a university where I teach educational leadership courses. I get the opportunity every single day to see research in action as we find, build, and put into place best practices for school districts throughout the whole entire nation. I bring not only this experience to the board, but I also bring a deep commitment to fully participating with my community. Since arriving in the Dallas three years ago, I've led the parent teacher organization at Tenlake Elementary School. I've volunteered hundreds of hours in our schools and our district buildings across the area. I've helped put on school and community-wide programs such as the Rhythm of the Dallas, Breakfast with Senna, and Bike Night. I've led the CGCC Housing Survey Project. I'm a member of Kiwanis and I sit on the School and Community Engagement Group for the Blue Zone Projects. In 2017, I applied for the vacancy on the school board and I was selected to serve this role to represent Zone Five. So it's been an honor and an opportunity to serve our community in this capacity and I would be proud to continue serving in this role for D21. So my motivation, I'm an educator, I'm also a parent. And this is a time of great change for our schools and our communities right now. I come to the board with no pre-established agenda. I have a desire to serve, to serve this community, to serve this team, to serve the district. As a parent and an educator, I take personal pride in the district in which my children attend. I'm committed, I'm focused on student, staff, and administrative success of our district, on our academic outcomes, institutional stability, and the needs of our community. As Trudy already mentioned, strong schools are the foundation of our strong community and I support strong schools that will support the future health of our community.
I'm Sherry Perry, running for the school board, Zone Five. I have a, I have a bachelor's in athletic training and psychology and I have previously worked in the industrial setting in injury prevention, working both one-on-one and in groups. And then I had my babies and I was a stay-at-home mom for a while. I have three kids, two that are school age and one who's a toddler, just turned three. And I'm also a former small business owner here in the house. So that's a little bit of who I am. Why I'm running is because I would like to see, I would like to see unity. I feel like there's a lot of, I've seen a lot of divisiveness, I've seen a lot of, in some cases, low morale. And I would like to see some sort of middle ground. There's a, there's a lot of diversity as far as what we want for our kids, what we want for our community, the direction that we think our schools should go. And there's a lot of different needs sprinkled into there. And I know that we can find a middle ground, a place of unity that's, that's good for, that's good for our community in general. A direction that is for our schools, that is good for everybody and creates a challenging environment for our students to learn, to get them ready for the world that they're going to go into. What are my plans? I would love to work towards, I would love to work towards new schools, almost new schools. I think that our schools are in very bad shape. And again, I think that there's a middle around there somewhere. I know that there's a lot of people on either side of that argument who think different things about that. And, and I think that there's, that there's a middle ground where we can build new schools in a way that is agreeable and a timeline that's agreeable. And I would also love to see a new superintendent come in who is, when that time comes, who is a creative problem solver. Again, someone who, who can create an environment that, that brings people together and that isn't, that doesn't serve to, to create more divisiveness between people. So, so those are the things that I think are important for community and social schools.
Another candidate for Zone Five. Are you, are you gonna check in?
Josh Ferris.
You are Josh, okay, great. I'm hoping that somebody is, yeah. What do you need to mark me?
I took them in, I asked them, should I check in with anybody? And they said, oh, I'll go on in. Your check is now.
All right, thanks.
F A R R. All right. All right. I'm Josh Ferris. I just want to say thank you very, very much, everybody here tonight for coming. Like I'm missing bedtime routine with my daughter and I get to, you know, read her book tonight because I'm here. But that, this is important. And you came here tonight, you gave up your free time when you could be watching Episode Two of Game of Thrones on whatever Netflix, and you said this is important. Thank you. Thank you for coming here. I grew up nearby, I'm, I guess I'm a second-class citizen of the Dallas. I grew up in Dallas Port in Clickatet County. I grew up looking in at the Dallas. The Dallas is a big city for me. We come here for the Cherry Festival, we've come here, we got roller rink when I was growing up, we had bowling alleys. There was the feed shack, we'd always have to go there and get salt blocks and stuff for the animals, you know, we had cows, cows and chickens and sheep and, and, you know, it was, that was the experience of growing up here, you know? I'd go to Fred Meyer's and I'd be a little kid running around and have my tooth full and maybe my mom would buy me a, you know, a G.I. Joe or something. I mean, that's just like a very Americana, blue-collar experience growing up here. And I remember that things changed drastically, where we went from being this idyllic, very Americana, blue-collar town to having a... And, and I remember my cousin David got sent to Iraq and that, that didn't really make sense. And then as I got into high school, there was kids that started to have problems with meth and, and... meth and, uh, and, uh, the, the drive-up movie theaters disappeared and the roller rink disappeared and a lot of these like idyllic things kind of disappeared. I really think we've got to acknowledge that what we're in now is a decline. And I'm hoping, like nineteen thirty-two, I'm hoping that we, we're nearing the bottom of this. But when you get to the bottom, which hopefully we're getting there soon, hopefully we can get out of this and start to move back in the right direction as we did in nineteen thirty-two, you have got to say, okay, what got us here? Okay, what got us to where we have these major addiction problems in our town? What got us to having these failing schools? Okay, you gotta look at it really hard. I like Bethany. I think she's somebody who likes social justice. I think, I think she's very smart and she has good intentions. And I like Sherry. I, I met her husband, uh, the other day. I liked them. I think most people are really good people, but there are people that are angry. They're angry, but they have legitimate reasons to be angry. Just look at the conditions of our schools. There's actually a lot of good going on there, right? But we don't want to just gloss over the reality of it. We have deficits, budget deficits that are shocking. We need to, uh, to fix and do good maintenance and retrofit and do some new construction. We do need some new construction, we need some new schools. But we can't pass a bond. There is an environment, a culture of fear in the schools. It is, it, I, I taught for, I taught for a year in, um, in Lyle and I tell you, I have more PTSD from my teaching experience and my experience in public schools, although it is so important and I'm still out there. I have more PTSD from, from teaching than I have from actually being deployed to Baghdad. Okay? That's the kind of condition we're dealing with. We have drug use, we have all of these serious problems. We have solutions as well, but we have to be courageous, we have to be willing to have hard conversations and really hash it out. We have got to go to where the community is. We've got to go to their churches, we've got to go to their community centers, and we've got to talk to them. And if they're not there, we've got to go knock on their doors and we've got to go talk to them. And we have got to bring the community back together and we have got to fight to restore this idea that the public school is the center of our community, that it's about our posterity, future generations and children. And we, and I've talked to people out there, they say, I don't care about the public school because I don't have kids or my kids have already gone through it, so it's not my problem anymore. We have got to break that down so people understand, we support public education now.
I think we've found this out. I think, can you wrap it up?
We support public education now or we pay more later for incarceration and illness. So this is a fight and I'm in it to win it. There is a difference in who you vote for. I hope you vote for me. Thank you.
Five. Now we move to zone, let's see, zone three. We don't have, David Jones come in, by any chance? Yes. Oh, okay. Well, move to zone two. Uh, Tom Rasmussen.
Oops. I thought I could be kind of catchy here. Um, hold on just a second. I want to come in front of the table because this is a barrier and I want to be out here talking to the audience because you are the community. Uh, just a little bit about me, I don't want to go blah, blah, blah about me, but I have a background as a child of a professor and I can say I was born in an early age, I had to go up and down the school, up, uphill both ways, uh, to school, so, sorry, my little joke there. But, um, anyway, um, education's always been important in my family. And I grew up, I was an underperforming child when I was a little kid because I was not engaged in school. And I went to high school and I had some wonderful teachers that totally activated me. And I was just sharing some stories about my social studies teacher that he's ninety-two, a survivor of Iwo Jima, and he and I are still in touch and that just makes me so happy. And I still remember things he taught me even to this day. But beyond that, my personal background, beyond that, my educational career is that I have been a teacher myself, not in the schools. I, I was at Mount Hood Community College and also Concordia University and Portland Community College. And I also ran a school career program that helped with students that were going through, um, what they call the Pro-Start Program. It was a school to career program that connected students from, uh, culinary hospitality programs to actually the workplace or going on to post-secondary study. And I had the fortune to work with forty-nine high schools in Oregon. So I was working with teachers, I was working with community members, I was working with business people. And now I'm a professional resume writer, so I'm working with a lot of these students who are graduating and they're trying to translate those skill sets into, you know, finding jobs. So how does that boil down to where I'm, why I'm standing here in front of you today? Well, there was a vacancy and it was a bit void and I stepped into the void, I don't know why, but, uh, I just felt a sense of service. I am a fairly new transplant to the Dallas, so I can't, uh, go on about my chops locally here, except the fact that I've been, um, trying to volunteer because I believe that's the part of, uh, community is active citizens. And so I got involved right away with the Chamber of Commerce, I got right, I involved right away with the farmer's market. You'll see me there in the market booth, helping and smiling and giving change and all that kind of stuff. But I really feel very strongly, this is a wonderful place to live. I'm hopeful. I know we have these challenges in front of us and I, I don't want to say gloom and doom. I, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna cut to the chase. Yes, we have some major things we have to deal with. We have to deal with the new superintendent search and we have to have a cohesive approach so we track the right people and not scare them away. We also need to be able to balance a good budget and as a business owner, I'm a fiscal hawk, so I'll be watching that bottom line like nobody's business, so. Um, and then also we have some, uh, you know, we have to ratify a contract and then work through the long-term facilities planning. So we got a lot of stuff on our plate. It's a little terrifying, but I think that everybody here that's listening here understands that if people are stepping up to volunteer, we want to do our very best. And, you know, we're gonna go in this consciously, mindfully, and reasonably. I see a great opportunity to have great civil discourse and really try to do the best on behalf of our schools and our students. We end up having those productive children and those strong schools, which really creates a strong community. So thank you very much.
Now it's zone two. Now we come to zone one and Nick Ramon for us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Flores and I'm running for, um, New York Boswell County School District Board of Directors, zone one. Um, I have lived in the Dallas for ten years. I was born and raised salmon, um, attended elementary school in Mexico and then moved back and, uh, graduated through Hutterford High School. I was blessed to attend Columbia, fortunately, and college and graduate and I, I think, um, I, I love, I love it here. And, um, I'm very fortunate to work for a not-for-profit where I've been able to do things for a lot of, uh, people that I wouldn't think would be possible in the industry that I work in. Um, and so I, I have two, uh, wonderful kids. One is in middle school, the other one is in elementary school. And, um, I've been a witness of, of how we are so lucky to have such talented teachers with a lot of dedication. Um, and use, I, I drive by the school and I see them there at eight P.M. and I think, wow, you know? And so, um, I think about what I can do as a parent and that's why I'm here. Um, I think that there are so many people that are not in this audience that would love to be here, but they can't. Um, and so I think about all of that and, and I think, I can, I can be here. I'm fortunate to, to have a job that will let me, let me come. Uh, my family supports me and I love this community, so I'm gonna do what I can to come and be a part of it. Um, it was, you know, I, I never thought I would be running on a board. Um, I'm probably, when it comes to experience and, um, you know, education, I might be the baby of the group, but my passion is huge and, uh, that's why I'm here. Um, I, harmony is what I want to bring to, to this board. Um, I, there's a great word, um, but I feel like I've heard, just, just as a citizen before even thinking about running, I heard a lot of people, uh, not a lot, but I've heard some people that were not happy with what was going on with the district and I understand them completely. Um, but I also think that we need to highlight the great things that are in this community and in the schools and the great things that our kids are doing and the opportunities that we have. Um, what I have, I don't have an agenda, you know? I, I want to learn, um, what, what my fellow board members, um, want to accomplish. I, I want to breathe and, and know, you know, by heart what our mission is for the school and, uh, make sure that we accomplish it as a group. And I need to get, get comfortable with, um, you know, this is a, this is a, I'm a voice, I would be a voice of one out of seven people, so I need to get comfortable with, um, maybe not agreeing with everything, but doing what's best for the majority. Thank you. And I just want to, sorry, I just want to address real quick, I, I don't know if we're recorded live, but I'd like to say something in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Erica Flores y me postulo para la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Washington, a la zona uno. Este distrito escolar, así como esta comunidad, son muy importantes para mí. Tengo dos hijos, ambos asisten a las escuelas del distrito. Y es una bendición tener maestros y personal con gran talento y dedicación. Esta elección es su voz para el dirigido representante que fomente el crecimiento, establezca confianza y que no se quede en el pasado, sino que quiera avanzar. This election is all of our voice to choose a representative that will encourage growth, establish trust, and move forward, not stand in the past. Thank you.
Mary Morehouse.
No, I have a mic, so does it sound okay? My name is Mary Morehouse. As you said, I have three great children, one in each school at the moment. I have one at Chennawith, I have one at the middle school, and I have one at the high school. They are also very much involved in athletics. And ever since my oldest two is fifteen now, was in kindergarten, I have been a key person at the various schools. Most of the schools would know who I was from name alone, uh, because while I absolutely agree with all of my fellow candidates and working together and cohesiveness, I got a little bit of reputation with the last article for being a little aggressive and a little in-your-face and that's okay too, because over the week I've been trying to think of somebody who has changed history by being quiet and calm. And I couldn't think of anyone. So I'm gonna just do me, I guess. So what made me want to run for the board is actually a really kind of an odd simple thing. I do a lot of tutoring in the area. Uh, as of my last county tutor, about six kids. I started independently and ran a study hall at Mojer a couple of years back for athletes because they needed time, they needed P.E. So I worked with principals and in lieu of P.E., they would come to my study hall, which I ran and volunteered my time. Um, I, I was tutoring a kid and his mother sent me his report card. He keeps trying to escape my grasp, but I swear I'll get him. But he got a one point seven five GPA for the first trimester of his freshman year. And while I was looking at that, I noticed that he was still fifty-first out of two hundred and four. So I did math, I work in taxes and do books for a living, so math is my safe place. I did the math and that comes to about twenty-seven percent of our freshman classes failing. And I didn't understand that. And it got me very upset. And the very next day I called, because again, I'm very direct, I called Mr. Evans at the high school and I said, what can we do? I've noticed this, what's being done, what can we do? And I had a very nice meeting with him and we talked about some options and we, you know, brainstormed a little bit and, and I said, you know, I said, I've done, I've been in schools for fifteen years or ten years, I've helped individual kids, I've done everything but this, so let's try this. Let's see if I can make a difference on a board level. And so that's, that's why I'm here. Um, as, as much as I have, my, my background is in books and accounting and I'm a foreign license tax consultant and an enrolled agent for the IRS, what I've mainly done is gone into various businesses and observed and watched and been able to streamline them a little bit. And, um, I've often been able to take, for example, a full-time job, a forty-hour-a-week job, and turn it around and do like a ten-hour-a-week job because there was inefficiencies missing. And I've worked with such a wide variety of people. Direct does not mean that you can't work with people. I know most people that I associate with appreciate directness. I am direct. There is no way for me to hide that. I will call Kurt Evans, I will call, hi Sandy! I'll call Sandy if I have a question, if I have a problem. Because without discussion, without acknowledging a problem, you can't solve it. And it doesn't matter if the problem's huge, like the, the bond and the new schools that we need, we've got to find a way. I will put it out there. I didn't support the bond. I don't, I didn't support the raising taxes. I'm in a zone that's very low income for the most part. They can't afford the property tax increases, can't do it, that'll take away from their kids even more. And even more than new schools, I think adults in the kids' lives and home with them and being involved is the most important thing to a successful education. I am that person for a lot of local kids and I think that by raising those taxes, we risk sending those parents to work even more. So that, that's my main motivation for running. Best job for zone one.
Thank you. Rebecca, let me get it right, this one point? All right.
So I'm Rebecca Fizuproy, uh, with Mojer and moved there in two thousand and eleven. As soon as I arrived in Mojer, I knew it was where I want to live for the rest of my life. Um, and as soon as my daughter got into the school there, uh, I started volunteering in all the different ways that, um, that I knew how. So I started helping with the garden club, um, I grew vegetables, we had a little farm and I sold all of them at the farm stand for two summers and donated all my profits to the school. Um, and, uh, the previous executive director heard that I was grant writer and said, could you help us start writing grants? And by the way, I can't pay you. And I was like, sure. It sounds like fun. Um, and, you know, probably thousands of hours later, um, I've helped the school raise hundreds of thousands of dollars through grants and, um, donor cultivation and also organizing art, art exhibition. I've been one of the leaders in that for about seven years now. So it's just an area that, that I have a lot of experience in and so I sort of took my skill set and applied it the best way I knew how at the school. Um, Muhammad Ali said, service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth. And I believe that wholeheartedly. I'm a bit of a volunteer junkie, um, you know, probably my full-time job suffers a little bit as a result of it, but, um, luckily I have a really flexible job. I work for OSU Extension, but I work from home on a national project to help support local and regional meets. Um, so my schedule's flexible enough that I get to volunteer at the schools. And last, uh, August, a position came open on the D twenty-one board. Carol Roderick had vacated her position when she became ill and I had just gotten off the Mojer School Board and a couple of Mojer School Board members were like, huh, you, you can't leave yet. We want you to be on the D twenty-one. We want you to be on the D21 board now and help advocate for our zone. And I was like, oh no, I just need a break, and here I am. So now I'm actually running for the position. I'm thrilled to be on the board, I work with a great group of people, I've, I've learned a tremendous amount. I think coming into the D21 board, I, I had only heard sort of rumors about this school district, and I was not from my little Mosher bubble. But as I started to dig into the data and see the tremendous gains that this district has made in the last five years, it's truly phenomenal. Graduation rates are over 20% up in the last five years. We're now 10 percentage points above the state average for graduation rates. Dropout rates have gone from 8% down to 2%. Some of these stats are amazing, the number of AP classes and AP teachers we have at the high school. I just see so much dedication from the teachers and the administration and the students. I really believe in the limitless potential of our kids and our community to do great things. So I would like to create a team on our board that works well together, that's collaborative, that has a positive growth mindset, and can work towards the future of this district. And in terms of what I want for this district, I don't have any agenda either, but I would like to be a key member of the superintendent recruitment process. It's really important that we run a very professional recruitment process, that we present a very cohesive and positive board so that we can recruit the very best applicants for our district and get an excellent superintendent to replace Candy. And then I'd also like to help a lot with the long-range facilities planning process. I've been helping Mosher School the last year to develop, first get a grant, and then do a facilities condition assessment of our 100-year-old school building, and I would like to help kind of bring that knowledge I've learned through that process to D21. So those are kind of my two main things that I really want to help roll up my sleeves, the superintendent and the physical planning process. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to congratulate you, this is the not-for-seen action, this is the way it's supposed to be, and we gave you all a ton of rope, and you all performed beautifully. Thanks so much for being with us. Thanks to the Cetera Center for playing us the space and for that, who's that funny gal Lisa over there in the chamber, and for putting us together. And please mingle with the candidates, ask them questions, and vote, do it well. Thanks much. (APPLAUSE)